I don't think there was one.
See if there is on the calendar. Preseason fire with Manti LaSalle, okay, that's what we're talking about. Easy enough, Forest Service. She can watch it live if she wants. Okay. We'd like to thank everyone for coming out today, welcoming you out to this special, special commission meeting. To begin things right, we'd like to ask everybody in the audience to please join us in the pledge, but we're gonna wait for Sheriff Wood. He's gonna make a grand entrance. He's coming, he's almost here. Okay. Now, please arise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I got 'em up, now you entertain 'em.
There we go.
Thanks Sheriff.
Okay, well today, we have, it is the preseason fire meeting with the Manti LaSalle Forest Supervisors. We have Justin Needles, Sheriff Wood, Commissioners, Fire Chiefs, Mayor's, etc., all these other people who are invited. But primarily, we have Hal Stevens and his crew. And we appreciate all of you guys for coming. Hal, would you please come to the mic and kinda tell us what's going on?
Okay, this is probably about the fourth time I've talked with you guys on these preseason. It's basically every year, we have an opportunity to talk with our cooperators so that we can all be on the same page in the event that we have something bad happen this year, as far as a large-scale fire. And so, we do these meetings so that we get to know you guys, you get to know me. First time I met Sheriff Wood, so nice to see a face with a name now, finally.
Well, everybody stood up as he came in.
I was impressed, does that happen every meeting? Okay, but but with it, what I each year, we kinda have a message from the Chief of the Forest Service and he sends a letter out to us, what his expectations are for the upcoming fire season. And therefore, about four or five years in a row, it seemed like that letter was just a repeat, a repeat. And then last year, things changed up a little bit because he was getting tired of going to funerals. And basically, we're still killing way too many firefighters and so, something had to be aggressively done. And so, last year, they came up with a thing and we mentioned it a little bit in last year's meeting. It was a program called Life First. Because the most important value at risk we have any time there's a fire are the responders that have to actually go up there. And so, he wanted to make sure that there was a concerted effort to try and cut that list down. Just a little history on that, back in 1994, I was at the time, I was living here in Price, I was the Engine Captain of the BLM engine and I had a couple of people on my crew. And I remember, we were having lunch just on the Forests there, past consumers, where you finally hit the Forests property. We shaded up and eaten lunch and we got a fire call and so and the fire call was just off Horse Canyon Road on Highway 6. So, we, you know, responded. But that day, and right in about that same time period, there was a massive lightning storm that went across our area, the southeastern Utah, into Colorado and that area. And so, we were hopping, catching these little fires and as we got closer to Highway 6, a helicopter was flying around doing kind of a recon. It was the ship from Grand Junction, I'd worked with them for years prior to that. So, and then there was someone from the former Moab Fire Crew that was on the helicopter that day. So, we kinda talked back and forth and hey, good to talk to you. And then they kinda guided us in because it was just a one-tree fire. You know, the trees aren't very big out there, but you have a hard time knowing where to stop to hike into it. So, we took care of that. And then, about the next day or so, I can't remember if it was the next day or the following day, I heard through the media and everything and through our system that 14 firefighters had died in Colorado. And I thought, oh, here's a bunch of local guys, they got themselves in trouble and doing something wrong, got in the wrong spot. And then I, once I heard that it was two Hell Attack members, smoke jumpers and shot crew members, which are the elite firefighters, almost wanted to throw up because something happened really badly. And so, and the one Hell Attack guy, I'd worked with for several years and I didn't get to work with the year before because when I worked with his helicopter that, the year before that, he was at home because his wife just had a new baby. And so, here he was, you know, it kinda really hit home. And so, a few years after that, we went back to the scene of the South Canyon Fire and just this side of Glenwood Springs, Colorado. And we did what's called a staff ride, where you kinda retrace the events of the day, what was going on during that particular day when the fire overran the individuals. And what was really meaningful that day is Eric Hipke, the only surviving individual that was down off the hill to survive the fire, he was our guide that day. And so, we had a firsthand experience with that and it was really touching to actually see what was going on. And then, last week, we were able to meet with the BLM and state people and we went and spent the night over at Battlement Mesa Fire Station, slept out in a tent and we redid that same staff ride. Only this year, I'd already been to the top of the mountain, so I only got partway up and volunteered to go move the vehicles to the next exit so that I could wait for them. But what they do on that staff ride, they retrace the timing and everything of what happened so that the people that are kinda new to it, it's one thing to read a report, it's another thing to be there on the ground and actually see where the lunch spot was, where the stump tree is that they refer to in the report, where the, all the crosses are, that are the places where they found the individuals. And then, over the hill where Eric Hipke finally got over the top of the hill and they were able to escape down the next canyon and within 20 minutes, that canyon had burned up also. But there were about, I believe, 30 or 40 that had actually gone that route to get out of the fire. So, there were some people. And so, but what really hit me this year is what was the value at risk that these guys were protecting over there? And you look on that hillside and it's oak brush, pinion and juniper trees. That's it. No marketable product. They were up there. I think the Grand Junction dispatch area had over 40 fires start and they were attending during that lightning bust, the same one that we got. And so, they were really busy and had to prioritize which one to go to. And so, they let that one just kinda smolder on the hill for the first couple of days before they even engaged it. But anyway, that was, was to me, this year, my takeaway was what was really important. And that's kinda where I wanted to go today is that just because we have smoke on the mountain doesn't mean that we need to risk people's lives basically, or throw a knee out or hurt somebody just because it's being up there and not really hurting anything. And with that fire, I can't remember if I mentioned, but two days or so after the fatalities, the fire went out by itself basically. That's what these fires do in this country. They run into different terrain or the wind quits blowing and you can't get pinion, juniper to burn if the wind's not really whipping. Oak brush only burns probably 5% of the time where it crams out, usually just skirts around. But everything lined up that day to where it was a bad deal. And so, one of the statements that well, with this Life First that we, he introduced to us last year, it's kinda got four parts to it that's easiest for it to remember is that every time you go to an incident, stop, think about what you're doing, discuss it with everybody that's involved with it and then act, rather than just jump right in and not really have a good plan. And so, I'll just quote one section of this letter from the Chief this year. He says, "The expectation is for all of us to focus our efforts intently on the decisions we make as agency administrators, commanders and individual responders." And this is in bold lettering. "Implement strategies and tactics that commit responders only to operations where and when they can be successful and under condition where important values actually at risk are protected with the least exposure necessary while maintaining the relationship with the people we serve." Because, and I consider all of you, the people that we serve, these are, you know, public lands that we protect. But I raised my family in this area, they're my mountains too. I grew up here in Utah and every one of these guys, you know, we work for the Forests, but it's all of our land. We want what's best for it, but we also know that the most important value up there are the people that are actually there or the public that may be in harm's way too. So, so that's just kinda the takeaway message and I just wanted to kinda start with that. And the reason we're meeting here is because during the event and we always look back at, you know, 2012 where we did actually have a fairly good-sized incident here and you guys, at least you were involved with that. But you were the ones that are in that little planning room deciding what the tactics and the measures and you're involved, you're the decision-makers here in the county. You know, I consider the Commissioner job one of the most powerful jobs in government because you decide what happens in your county, whether the color of the map is green or blue or yellow or white. You're still responsible for everything within Carbon County and the decisions you make are pretty much final. And so, it's important that we get those relationships going, understand that you do have a responsibility. If you have a concern during the event of something going on, speak up and maybe you can better understand what's going on and why they're doing what they're doing. And then, maybe you have a value at risk that they're not considering or something. But anyway, it's just, these meetings are establish this relationship so that we're kinda prepared if something happens. And so, I don't know, do you have any questions or anything at this point?
No, I just appreciate you being here and giving us the update.
Okay, and with that, I, last week, Troy, he's the new Fire Management Officer out of the Farron Office. He couldn't go with us because our Forest Fire Management Officer, he's back supporting the fire situation in Atlanta, Georgia right now. He's helping with the situation there. And then, we've been supporting them back east since basically late October, we started sending crews back to help them out. And they've had a miserable fire season and it's continuing. And this year, we've also sent people to Florida, Georgia and different places to support that. So, he couldn't be here and last week, he couldn't go on the staff ride because he was taking Brandon Hoffman's place at the Region Fire Management Officer Meetings and all the Forest Supervisors Meeting held in Ogden, Utah. And I kinda like to turn the time over to him so he can give a little bit of update of what kind of our marching orders are from here regionally so that if you happen to see things going on on the mountain and not really understand it. It's just like last year, it didn't happen in your county, but over in Sampeach County, we had what was called the Porcupine Fire. It went for, I don't know, it started sometime in July and didn't really go out till it snowed. We kinda let it do its thing and we even encouraged it to burn some of the stuff. But there were some things that the fire did some good. And so, if it's a lightning start, we're allowed to do that now. And then, towards the end of the summer, we had a little lightning start over in Fly Canyon, just north of Joe's Valley. And it was determined that that could do some good too. And it was a little bit different situation than the one over at the Porcupine Fire, but it still did a lot of good benefit, but there were some things that could've gone better with that. And with that, we had a project to do a prescribed fire in that same area so we could protect the Potter's Pond Campground and protect the major power lines that goes through that area. But we could not, we were already to burn for about three years in a row and we just couldn't do it with the power still charged in those lines. And at the time, we could not convince the power company to reroute for a day or two until we took care of that. But they were more than accommodating this past summer when it did hit in a pretty hard way. And then Troy will get into a little bit more of that with his report from our region office. Troy?
Thanks for letting me be here. I'm Troy Sewan, I'm the new North Zone FMO, I've been there since October. Excuse me. I didn't grow up in this area, but I've been in this area quite a bit. My wife's from Huntington and so, we're moving back to that area now. So, I did go to the meeting in Ogden last week and we did have a lot of discussions about what we call these managed fires. And one of the things in the other meetings that we've been discussing quite a bit is, you know, how are we doing as the Forest Service? And when we go into doing these fires, are we communicating enough with you, the Commissioners or Sheriff and whatnot? Are we keeping you in the loop? And that's a question I have for you. And I don't, I know we haven't had any here, but like with the Sealy Fire, how did you feel that went?
You know, I was serving at that point in time and I thought the communications went fairly well, but it was really hard to get actual updated information that was accurate. And so, I think maybe the speed of the communications, you know, maybe even a more direct line in, but we really did struggle trying to know exactly where the fire was and what actions we may need to take. And anyway, that was my observation in the two or three days that we were under real heavy siege there.
Okay, and I appreciate that because that's the feedback we really need. I mean, just so you know, we can't really be successful up on the forest unless we have you guys on board. We need to be communicating. In order for you to help us, we need to tell you where we need help. And so, I'm hoping that from here on, we can communicate a little bit better. And that's kind of one of my goals, is to try and get the information out there. I mean, we have utiinfo.gov, we have all kinds of ways to do that, but we also have what we call a trap line and we're trying to build that trap line to the different folks that we do need to contact when we have things happen, whether it's in your county or even adjacent to your county. So that if we need help or if you have questions, you know where you can come to ask them and hopefully, we can give you that updated information that's accurate and like say, when it's happening. And that way, you can prepare better. The earlier you guys know what's going on, the better we're gonna be able to do. And so, that's kind of the, some of the things we discussed at the regional office because we had the two fires last year and from a Forest Service standpoint, we feel that we got a lot of benefit out of that, close to, you know, 4,000 or 5,000 acres that burned, that were treated. And as we get those little fires out there and we're able to manage them and let them do a little bit, hopefully, it'll create speed bumps so we don't have another Sealy Fire down the way. But as we have these holes punched, the fire will have a place that we can actually fight it and stop it, you know, we have so much beetle kill and stuff out there. So, that's some of the stuff that they're talking to us about. And around the region, Idaho, Nevada and in Utah, you're starting to see more and more of these folks do that. And what we don't wanna do is do it in a complete vacuum. So, last year, we had the Fly Canyon Fire. We put the plan together, we call it a Wolf Dis- Wildland Fire Decision System Tool that gives us our boundaries and where we're gonna fight the fire and what we're gonna do, where we're gonna let it go to. And when we talked to the Sheriff and whatnot, they had some concerns that if the fire got into this area, they would have some flooding issues and other issues. And so, we were able to take that, those comments and redesign what we're doing so that we can meet the needs of their concerns. Sometimes, we may not be able to due to safety issues and other things, but you know, we do wanna hear what the concerns are and we do need to hear that and hopefully, come up with a plan that's mutually beneficial for everyone, as well as be able to keep our firefighters safe. And so, that's some of the stuff that we're looking at doing. The region is promoting or encouraging us to go out and identify more of these lightning strikes that we can do this with. Of course, human-caused fires, we will still 100% put those out as quickly as we can. Lot of litigation things going with that. So, one of the other things that I was gonna bring up, a little off the subject with fire, is the Forest Service this year has purchased a piece of equipment that it's called a Feller Buncher. What it is, it has a head on it that, well, it has two. One that will go and do a mulch. Has anyone been out and seen some of the areas up towards Swayze or out and about where they've been mulching the trees and whatnot, clearing them out? We're creating, what we're doing is reducing fuels. It's also wildlife, it helps with wildlife and whatnot. But we're reducing fuels in areas with these type of machines. But this one, it's a little bit bigger and it has a dual purpose. It can go on steeper slopes and whatnot, but it also has a head on it that will actually cut the material into lengths and strip it down and basically, hopefully, we're trying to use the timber that's there. Because I know that's a big concern, you know, why are we out just burning it, why can't we use it? So, we have some areas up by Miller's Flat and around that area that they're starting to use that this year that will pull some of that timber out and be used for firewood or sawlogs or whatever, they're looking at doing some of that. And I just bring that up here so that you guys are aware we have something like that. And the Forest Service, especially on the Sampeach side, is starting to do quite a bit more logging and timber stuff. Most of it's salvage sales type stuff, but a lot of it's to start managing some of that. So, which goes into the fuels and fire because as the more we get these dead trees out of there, the more open it is. And again, trying to avoid the Sealy-type fires and whatnot. So, anyway, with that, I hope that we can work together and if there is a communication issue, if we're not communicating well enough, please let us know.
At what point will you let the counties know that you're going to let a lightning strike burn?
So, when we get a lightning strike, there's what has to happen first. We have to identify, there's certain conditions that have to be met. One, for example, the Sealy Fire. During the time that Sealy Fire was going on, there was no way that we were gonna let anything just burn. We had Sealy Fire going on, we had Wood Halla Fire going on, we had Church Camp on the other side here going on and we also had Wolf Den over on the Book Cliffs going and two or three other big fires. There were no resources whatsoever. And we were in a preparedness level four, five at the national level. So, you know, if those, if we're under those conditions, normally, we're not going to because we just won't be able to, if things go bad, get the resources we need to take care of it. So, usually when we meet, if the conditions are right and we discuss where the fire is exactly and if there is an opportunity, then the District Rangers will determine yes or no, we can do that. Usually, it'll take about a day. And then, as soon as that happens, then that's when we start that trap line and start telling everybody that this is what, we have a fire out here. We'll notify the counties, we'll notify the public and we'll put the signs up and we'll start notifying Sheriff's Office and just so that people are aware that that's there. So, it should be within a day.
Is that, is that the point that we can then comment and say, well, this is in our watershed, we'd like you to fight it at this ridge so it doesn't impact?
That is the point. When we start contacting the counties, let them know that things are happening within their county especially or even adjacent to. That's when, you know, you guys, hey, we have a concern here. What are you gonna do about this or what are you gonna do about that? And then, we can put that into the consideration. And again, if it's something we can do without putting people, you know, in an unsafe way, we'll do that. Once we have that tool, that decision tool, the Wolf Dis put together, we'll be able to discuss, you know, this is how we're gonna manage the fire and hopefully, we can build that relationship with you guys that you'll trust us once we have it there. Because a lot of, a lot of things go into, a lot of science goes into why we're doing it. A lot of safety things go into why we're putting the lines where we put them. And my preference usually is some sort of a road or whatnot that we can, you know, reinforce so that we can get, have access and get in there. Sometimes, that's not doable. But the one thing we don't wanna do is lose that trust because in some cases, and even here in Utah, we've had, where they've had that and they put a line on the map and then when it got to the line, they're like, well, it's still doing good, so let's go to this next line. They draw another line and, you know, two or three times out, all of a sudden, it's running to the interstate and jumping the highway and it's not all good. So, you know, once we have that identified, if we've done our job correctly the first time, that's kind of where I plan to keep it. So, just so you know that. Anyway, any other questions? That's a great question.
One of the other things that I would like to see, I haven't been able to find it through the Forest Service or the other resources, is in, in the name of truth and energy, when we talk about the emissions that come off from the burning of our forests, that tonnage is never reported. It's always pointed back at us as a coal-producing county and the emissions that come out of our power plants. But my guess would be because of the past policies and even some of those going forward, that from an environmental standpoint, you guys ought to be reporting what that means. Because the falsehoods that are out there based on energy and yet, wood has an energy value to it in so many aspects.
Right.
You need to be accountable for that too. So, you may run that up the flagpole and say, hey, we'd like to see what that tonnage equals.
What the tonnage equals as far as smoke in the air?
As far as CO2.
CO2, okay.
Because there's gotta be some factors there. When the Sealy Fire was going, they told me that it was five times the tonnage of downfall that was on the ground in that area. That's just not good management of a resource.
Right.
And so, yeah, the pollution that came with that and those days of, you know, health hazard, yeah, far worse than what we produce as an energy-producing county. So, I just would like to see those policies be admitted to and to be responsible for.
Okay. We can look into that for sure.
Be great.
Appreciate your time Troy.
You bet. Thanks. Nice to meet you all.
You too.
I just wanna follow up a little bit. I probably, at the beginning, should've introduced who I brought with me today. Of course, we've met Troy now. Sitting behind Troy is our new Engine Captain here in Price. You're gonna see his face quite a bit. Our Engine Captain we've had for the last about seven years. He was able to secure a job and then a promotion and he lives up in Oregon now. And so, Seth Larson, he's come from the Salmon Chalice National Forest where he's looking forward to becoming an Engine Captain for the first time. And so, you're gonna see him quite a bit. Over here between the two state guys that you know is Brandon Jensen. He's our prevention person and he's part of our whole program. He helps promote a lot of the activities at public events to get the word out of what things are going on. And then, over here is Kevin Albrecht. He's our Wildlife Biologist slash Acting Fire Manager when the District Ranger's gone. And so, he got voluntold that he could be here today representing Darren Olson since he's out doing fun things this week. And so, Kevin, he got to go to training up in Boise this year to learn what the line officer's duties are in the event of one of these because our Forest Supervisor felt it's important that there was a backup in every office. So, we've got a range guy over in Ephraim that's helping us out and a recreation person down on the south zone helping out, learning the line officer skills so that they can step in and help us make the official decision. Because when I send Seth out to a fire, just kinda going along with we get a lightning start, if it's a lightning start, a known lightning start, Seth's responsibility is to get that word back to dispatch and then paint us a picture of what the potential is. But even before that, this time of year, we've got a fuels crew that's tracking the fuel moisture, of the live fuel moisture of the plants. And so, there's a lot of science that goes in and so, during certain times of the year, certain plants and vegetation has to reach a certain level before it's gonna burn. And so, if it gets too dry, then it's outside the parameters that we want to deal with so we'll suppress it as quickly as possible. But if it's in a predetermined area that could do some good, Seth's gonna relay that information back to me or the duty officer that's over the fire at that time, which will be probably Troy or myself. And then, we relay that information to the District Ranger and kinda double-paint the picture. And then, it's the Rangers, from that information that the guys on the ground give us, will determine if it's a good location for the managed fire. And then, at that point, if it is, then they start that Wolf Dis process that Troy alluded to. And that's where you can be there to be involved with that Wolf, creating the Wolf Dis and get your input there at that time. The program itself, it's got a whole list of values that we know that are out there. It's preloaded so that you draw that circle that you want to keep the fire contained to. Every value at risk that's Every value at risk that's in that circle will automatically populate into a thing. And then if it's not really that important, you can click and disregard it. And so it does have a system that brings that into play, but then also, if there's other things that are not identified, that's when you can decide on other things that are valued, that you can actually type into the program. And then, like Troy mentioned, once it's decided, there'll be kind of lines drawn within the boundary, and we call them MAPs, Management Action Points, so that if the fire gets to this point, this is the action that we take to stay within the objective of the entire plan. So there's a lot goes into it, Casey. And at that time, I hope that if it's in Carbon County or close to Carbon, Amory County, that you and your fellow commissioners can be right there in the room as they create that decision. And once that's decided, Seth, meanwhile, he's kind of up there monitoring the fire and checking, giving reports to dispatch, what's taking place. And once the decision's made, you can print it, and then he will get a copy of it, and it's his marching orders, how he's supposed to, what he needs to do with that particular fire. And so, you know, there's a lot that goes into it. That year of 2012, the conditions of the landscape at that time from our fuels crews and all the tracking that we were doing on the live fuel moistures, it was decided on June 13th of that year to put fire closures, because things were so dry that the only way you could have a campfire, once those closures went in effect, was in a developed campground. And since then, that's been put into place quite a few times in this area, but not on the Manti La Salle. Because I'm an advocate that if you don't have to go on fire restrictions, why are you going to put the burden on us to go tell everybody that's camping that they can't have a campfire going outside their trailer? And one thing is that the conditions up on the Manti are a lot different than the private land down here in the lower countries, or BLM country might be different. And so during those type of years, we're able to maintain no restrictions, where the state of Utah or the BLM may have an elevation level that below this point, you can't have those type of fires. Or along the Colorado River officially, that's one of the first places that goes into restrictions because of the possibility of human-caused fires. But I'm an advocate to not put restrictions when they're not needed, so it doesn't disrupt the people that we serve. And so that's one thing that we also look at, that you guys need to be aware of. But there is a lot of science that's involved, and it's interesting, when we do prescribed fires, when we actually light the map, they call them prescribed fires because there's a prescription. The humidities have to be so certain level, the fuel moistures have to be a certain level, the temperatures, the wind and all of that, or we can't light the match. But the deciding factor is the state of Utah. We can't light until the state of Utah gives us permission because of the smoke issues. And there's times, you've probably seen when people go burn their leaves in the fall, the smoke gets about 30 feet in the air and then spreads out about two miles, and it just stays there. Those are the conditions we can't burn in, because the atmosphere pushes all that smoke down to the ground. So there's a kind of an index, it has to be a certain level of clearance, smoke clearance, before we get the go-ahead by the air quality control here in the state of Utah, and they give us permission. But at the same time, there is some reporting that takes place to them, accountability during a managed fire, because they know that, yeah, it is an inconvenience to have that smoke in the air, and it does have consequences. But there again, it'd be interesting, too, to know the difference between what happens each fire season in the West compared to what's going on with the rest of the time in the nation, you know, with the other man-caused pollutants. So there are models that if plug in the tons per acre and all that, it'll tell you how much it's putting up in the air. So they have an idea, but maybe they're not disclosing what it's actually tonnage. It's the particulates, PM-15s, that they're concerned with, the little ones that you don't see that get into your lungs and cause the major problems. So that's kind of a follow-up with that. Kevin, as far as the line officers, did you have anything to say today? Maybe about, kind of what your experience is, now that you know what's all involved, to make those decisions in the back room while everything's going on?
Just want to tell you, thanks so much for, I know many of you have worked very closely with Darren Olson, our district ranger, and appreciate you working with him on that. I think you talked a little bit about our, some of the policies and how they affect the county, and that's, I think, one of the key points, is to have that open communication and talk about some of the things that's going on, and make sure that we are aware of some of the things that we do on the ground and how they affect, and vice versa. Talking a little bit, as I heard Commissioner Potter, a few things to be aware of that I see happening on the forest in a really positive light is, we were able to sell the largest timber sale on the Manti here a couple of years ago. That's ongoing. That timber will be going off about five truckloads a day off the San Pete side, will be cut on top. But speaking of that, we're also underway of surveying and getting ready to do the NEPA for the largest timber sale not only that we've ever undertaken on the Manti, but what I understand is maybe one of the largest timber sales our region's ever allowed. And so we did lead region four in the amount of timber produced this last couple of years, and so there's some real positive things happening that way. But we want to have that open communication, like, that was stated before. If we do some of these fires in prescription, when the temperatures are low, when we can make these pockets where we don't have a Sealy burn, and we can get some of this working with you, of when is that timing, when is it best? We understand, there's always people that want to be on the hill. You've got the hunting season, you've got the spring, and so working with the communities, we want to hear from you of when that timing is best, and put that together with the science and see what that is. But we do value working with you, and know that communication line is always open.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Thanks.
Okay, I just have a few other things I failed to mention earlier, that one of the contacts that we keep you guys informed is through Jeremy, the county fire warden, and through Rudy Sandoval. They, we work on a weekly basis, communicating back and forth, so that we know what they're doing, they know what we're doing. We get specific modules dispatched to fire. Jeremy has the liberty, if there's a fire in the counties that he protects, Carbon, Amory County, he doesn't need to be dispatched, he's there. And just to make sure that everything's going, and he can report back to Rudy what's going on, and that we can keep that flow of information going. And so that's another good avenue of knowing what's going on, is just through our state fire, our county fire warden and that. I don't, I believe that's pretty much what the intent was today. I didn't know exactly how many questions you'd have for us, and I'm glad you weren't too tough on the questions, but if you do have some tough questions, go for it, do your best to...
Well, I know that Jeremy always answers the phone when I call him, so.
Okay. Yeah, because, and I know the state's in the process of changing the way they fund the fire program, and hopefully he's explained that so that you understand it, because I surely don't. But I know that it's more responsibility locally for the funding of things than it has been in the past. But yeah, it's been a pleasure working as an inter-agency. And when we get the fire, you know, we're all yellow shirts, we don't really care what agency we're part of, just as long as we know what the objective is, we can do it safely, and, you know. And I consider my program kind of the exciting program of the Forest Service, because everybody's got an interest when they see smoke. But it's that education effort that Brandon Jensen's involved with, to educate the public, that, yeah, there is some bad smoke, but there are fires, but there's also good fires that naturally can clean up the vegetation, that can help the aspen that's being encroached on by the conifers, that they can regenerate that, and it takes some disturbance like a fire to make that happen. And so we're pretty proud of some of the projects we've done in the past to get that aspen component back into the ecosystem. And it does take a pretty hot fire to make that happen in a larger area, so that the ungulates, the cows, and the elk don't chew off all the aspen as they're growing. But we've found that if we can get that footprint, at least a thousand acres or so, there's plenty enough for even them to eat and still have a successful reintroducing the aspen back into the landscape. But anyway, do you have any further question, or?
Appreciate your time, thank you, Hal.
Okay, and you'll probably be hearing from me next spring or somebody to schedule, and hopefully we can get a good turnout, and we can keep these communications going, because it's really important that that takes place, and people know that we're not hiding things and doing things, as Troy mentioned, in a vacuum, because everybody has a stake in all of these things that we do on our mountain. You look like you have to...
What's the fire projection for this year?
Because of the weather we've got now, we may have a fire season, but it's been pushed back. It's been such a long time since we've had a normal precip in this area, that this year it's pretty much normal, and everybody thinks, oh my goodness, we've got way above normal precip up there, but this is what normal looks like. And so it's going to take a few more years of normal to make sure all the reservoirs fill up, and the trees actually get the moisture content in them and get out of that drought-stressed state that they've been in, because they're very vulnerable to dying, and if they do have the drought stress to them. But if it does come, they think in artery, it'll probably be not till kind of August, September-ish. But because of all the moisture we've had, it just means the fine fuels, the grasses are growing that much higher, and when they do dry out, then we could have some later-season fires. Our area of Utah is not one of the projected hotspots in the nation, at least for the three-month outlook, but it seems like there always is a spot in the US that's got problems, and this year it's the east and the south, southeast. And that's, I wouldn't, they've had problems, even in Texas might have another bad year, because, well, you've seen the news of what happened in some of the Midwest states of all the cattle that were killed, and the ranchers had to go, the problems they had. And those fires that, they can go so fast that all that the public safety can do is try and get people out of, from in front of it, and then they have to go back and hope that something survives it. But they're kind of in that stage again this year, and they're not too excited about what may happen. But the one advantage we have here is the majority of our fires even are lightning-caused. Majority of the fires in those areas are all arson. It's incredible. When I was in Texas in 2011, I think I responded to 11 fires, and only one of them was lightning strike. And the rest of them was, well, one was on the same county road, and a guy had a grudge against one of those plantation that was growing timber for, I think, the meal that they had there locally. The last time he finally was successful and wiped out about 700 acres of stand trees, about 12 feet tall, that was, I mean, just, anyway, I don't understand the mentality of that. But anyway, feel free to contact me anytime. I'm over here helping Seth get his feet on the ground, new engine captain, and I have a reason to come here, because I've got family that's good to spend a night with them also, so I'm sure I'll see you guys around. Nothing else, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, and we are adjourned. Thank you.